Listen only mode.
Good morning and welcome to the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors informal meeting this morning. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Yes, good morning. Supervisor Gates?
Here.
Supervisor Hickman?
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo? Supervisor Sellers?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and hopefully Supervisor Gallardo will be arriving shortly, but our first agenda item is a presentation by the Department of Public Health.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am going to start us off, if you want to go to the first slide. Just want to recap where we are with our latest numbers. These are actually last updated. We have more recent numbers, but the ones on our presentation are from the 10th of November. And you can see for the 24 hours before this report was published, we had 1,936 additional cases. And our total for Maricopa County of COVID-19 cases that have been reported to public health are now at 757,660. That same day, we did see that last bottom number. You can see 20 additional deaths, and we have seen in Maricopa County, 12,406 lives have been lost to COVID in Maricopa County. If you want to go to the next slide. What's really important about this is our Epi curve. We're all very familiar with this. When we were here just about a month ago, we were kind of where that sloped down slightly, and we were hoping we were on a trend of leveling off. We saw a blip in our numbers kind of go up, and we were hoping that that's what it was, is a blip. Unfortunately, it is now an upward trend. So we are definitely increasing our cases here in Arizona and in Maricopa County.
So do we have any idea what that's attributed to?
We think it's a lot of things. One is, we are in that season where there are a lot of weekend events. What all of us have been, you know, come to know as super-spreader events. We have concerts every weekend. We have large sporting events. We've had the State Fair and Pride and all of these great events which are wonderful, and a lot of them are outdoors. But because of how high the spread is in Arizona, and these venues and these events do not require masking, we're still going to see a lot of spread. So we're going to get to what we're really pleading with the public to start doing. But we think that's a lot of it, and the Delta variant is here, and we'll see how much it's the Delta variant that's going around, which we know is spreading more easily and more rapidly in communities.
Okay, well certainly the infection rate right now is alarming.
Absolutely, absolutely. So if you want to go to the next slide, this is really just a zoomed-in version. If you think of, you know, where it shows that slight word down, that was really on the Epi curve when you saw that of not fully vaccinated versus vaccinated. These are our case rates per 100,000, or our cases per 100,000. And the important thing I really want to point out on this is, one, that it's increasing, and also that the unvaccinated population is three and a half times more likely to get COVID than individuals who are fully vaccinated. If you want to go to the next slide, this is the same thing, looking at our vaccinated versus unvaccinated. These are our deaths per 100,000. Oh, is this out of order? Did I get the wrong one? Oh, I skipped one. I'm sorry. You're on the right slide, though. This is our hospitalizations. And again, it's the same thing that you're going to see, the fully vaccinated are less likely, and it's 5.2 times less likely to be hospitalized than those who are not vaccinated. And that's where we know this vaccine is most effective in preventing hospitalizations and deaths. So when you see that 5.2 times, that's exactly what our hospital partners are sharing with us, too, that the individuals they're seeing that are inpatient in the hospitals with COVID are non-vaccinated individuals.
You know, Marcy or Ms. Flanagan, I hear a lot of arguments that people who have had COVID are as immune as people that are vaccinated. Can you talk about that a little bit, or is that later on in your presentation?
Yeah, actually, Dr. Sunnenschein has a great slide that she's going to go into all of that discussion, because I hear a lot of that, too, about the natural immunity versus the immunity from a vaccine. So she's going to talk to us about that and explain that.
Thank you.
So if you go to the next slide, this is the one that I was saying, that gray area is really pre-data. So I wouldn't pay a lot of attention to what's happening in that gray area, because that data is not full yet. It's not, you know, up-to-date, and we're still going to see numbers rolling in from that timeframe. But when we talk about our deaths, similar to hospitals, you're six times more likely to die of COVID when, for those who are not fully vaccinated compared to those who are fully vaccinated. And again, just pointing to the importance of the vaccine and how effective and safe it is for preventing hospitalizations and deaths.
Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so the gray area, don't pay too, well, look at that downward line, though, too. And that's what we're dealing with also when it comes to deaths. You know, the vaccine is supposed to keep people from, you know, and, but if this trend line, even it's in this gray area, and the numbers haven't been fleshed out, the trend line, to me, it kind of doesn't make sense unless this, is this Delta variant, is this less of a killer than what was before? Because the trend line, I would think, would not look like that, even on unfleshed-out data. I mean, it's just like numbers. So explain that.
Do you want to explain a little?
So, thank you Supervisor Hickman. The, so it's not that the data are not fleshed out, it's that they're simply not reported yet. There's a long, about a four-week lag from when we have a case to when an individual dies. And then, once somebody passes away, it takes the medical examiner or the provider a long time to certify the cause of death. So it's not that they're not fleshed out, it's that they're simply not complete yet. But are you, are you asking why are there deaths at all in the unvaccinated population?
No, 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 I'm sure, I mean, this is, this is COVID, and we know that there's going to be comorbidities and everything. I was just, just looking at that top red line, like you would think that with the, with the fully vaccinated, understandable, you know, because that's what the vaccine was about, to keep you out of the hospital. Doesn't, no one has said that this was going to keep you away from COVID, but it keeps you out of the hospital and hopefully keeps you living through it. But that not fully vaccinated, that's what, so you're kind of explaining it to me. Maybe the numbers on the death certificates are not keeping up
Right.
with that red line.
So it's not, it's just not factual. That downward slope is artificially low because we haven't received all of the deaths that occurred in that period yet in public health.
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess it's, from my perspective, it's somewhat bothersome that we would even show that, then, if it, if it isn't real, because it gives people a false view of what's really happening.
Thank you. We can definitely fix that. The gray area is just meant to show that it's not complete data yet, but you're up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the Epi curves are really done that way to show that it's up-to-date, if you see, through the middle of October. But the data that we're still waiting for goes back to the middle of September.
Yeah.
So that's what, really what that gray is. And the same thing happens with the hospitals. It's just a much shorter gray that you'll see on the
Right.
previous slide. For the hospital data, we get that a lot quicker. And it's, like we've been saying all along, once we have a case, we know about two weeks later, we start to see the increase in the hospitalizations, and then a couple weeks after that, we see the increase in deaths. So we know that number's going to change. And Chairman Sellers, Rebecca and I both had that discussion of, we need to cut off, it would have been nice if we could cut off that graph, so it didn't show that gray, because we didn't want anyone to think that it really had that true downward trend.
But the gray truly exists, as long as it stepped out.
Yeah.
I don't mind seeing that trend line, because, you know, it's just as bad, like, because that would be a question we'd probably be asking right now. So up till September, you've got this massive line that makes sense to what we've been told about the vaccine and what it does. And then it drifts down, but I just hate to go three months into it. It's good for a presentation like this, that we, you guys can, but, but people won't look beyond these graphs a little bit, and then it could look like, all of a sudden, now when the numbers come in and that line goes up, then, you know, you have that, like, how did all of a sudden the line, the numbers change?
Right.
So, just if we could clearly get the gray box stepped out of why the, these numbers are, look like this, in the gray box.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
Good point. Thank you.
If we go to the next slide. So our case rates, unfortunately, per 100,000 are increasing. For the, two weeks ago, the 24th of October through the 30th, we were at 251 cases per 100,000. Unfortunately, for the past full week of data we have, October 31st through November 6th, we increased 18%. So we are now up to 297 per 100,000. Again, just reiterating what all the other data has been showing is, we are significantly increasing our spread in Maricopa County of COVID. If you go to the next slide, this is also a number that we've looked at a lot during this past couple years. It's that percent of positive tests. We are back to what our previous peak was at 13%. And so this, again, is really showing us that we're having a lot of positive tests come back. There's a lot of community spread happening. If you go to the next slide, I think if there's any slide that could be good, the good news is that deaths do appear to be leveling off. But again, we already said, we know there's a lag time in that. But certainly to what the previous peaks that we saw when our cases increased, there appears to be a little bit of leveling off, not as much of an increase in deaths, which is good. But that's not to say that it's because the Delta variant doesn't cause more deaths. Actually, the opposite has been true, that it's actually more severe health outcomes that individuals have experienced with the Delta. And if you go to the next slide, this really shows the Delta. I'll use a quote from Dr. Sunnenschein last week. She said, "It looks like Barney." The graph is the big purple monster, is what is Delta happening in Maricopa County. So you can see, it really started in June, and then July, Delta just took over. And you can see hardly any other variants are even spreading in Arizona right now in Maricopa County. It's all Delta, which means it's highly contagious, and everyone needs to be really vigilant and aware that that's what's circulating in our community. If you go to the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about the vaccine recommendations and boosters. We know a lot has changed in the past couple of months, so we just wanted to go over and make it clear for where we at, where we are at on those. So if you go to the next slide, talking about the vaccines, just want to go over these things, that the COVID vaccine is safe and effective, which is the most important part, and that it is very effective in preventing severe disease and death from the variants. And it's all the variants that are currently circulating, including the Delta variant. Infections only happen in a small portion of people who are fully vaccinated, even with the Delta variant. And when these infections occur among vaccinated people, they do tend to be milder. However, if you are fully vaccinated and become infected with the Delta variant, we now know you can spread that virus to others. So people with weakened immune systems, including, including those who take immunosuppressive medications, may not be protected, even if fully vaccinated. And that's where it's going to be really important to do, is many of those layered mitigation strategies as possible. So if you go to the next slide, this is the vaccine recommendations. So it goes by each age group. So you can see four years and under, unfortunately, there is no vaccine available for that population. When we get to the five to 11-year-olds, we know that the Pfizer BioNTech is approved for that population. And then when you get to the 12 and seven, to 17-year-olds, same thing, the Pfizer is the approved vaccine. And then when you get to 18 and older, you have all three that are approved, the Pfizer, the Moderna, and the J&amp;J.
Now, Clint, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get too far away, because it's just, it's just one line, but I knew, you know, by living this on this board, you know, when COVID started and then getting into Arizona. So you touched on it a little bit. What's happening in the rest of the world with the Delta variant? Some countries are, saw the Delta variant first, right? And then, and then it got here. Is there anything going on in other countries that could be a bellwether, again, another variant? What are other countries looking like? What are other regions in the United States, are they into this a little bit faster, like we saw before?
Yeah, I'll touch a little bit, and then if Dr. Sunnenschein wants to add anything. We know that over in Europe right now, they're seeing a huge increase in their numbers as well, which does cause concern for the states, because we've lagged a little bit behind them. They are even going into lockdown in some of their communities over there, because the numbers have gotten so high again. And the majority is that Delta variant. Dr. Sunnenschein can talk if there's other emerging variants, but none that I've heard of that is like this Delta variant. All of the US, there was a time where you weren't seeing this high level of spread across the entire US. There were some pockets. Unfortunately, right now, almost the entire US is red. So there's, I think, maybe one or two states, the last time I saw, that were just in that orange level. But there is a lot of spread happening. And what that tells me is that if you're fully vaccinated, it's going to do a great job, if you do get COVID, of having mild symptoms, hopefully keeping you out of the hospital. But it doesn't prevent you from totally getting COVID. And everyone really needs to know that. And that's why, even when you're vaccinated, I know there were a few months, I was excited, like, I'm going to go to outdoor events and not wear a mask, and I'm back to wearing my mask again, because the numbers don't lie. They're telling us the spread is really bad. And even if you're fully vaccinated, it's just not that hall pass to go out and, and not do any mitigation efforts. And that's really what the CDC says, is look at what the spread is happening in your community. But we know, across the whole nation, spread is very high right now.
So I just wanted to add that the UK is really the, the country that we're all watching, because they had such a high surge in Delta before we did. They knocked it down, and they, too, have had a really big increase in Delta. There's one other variant of concern called the Gamma variant. And it's, it's something that they're watching, which is why it's of concern. But almost all of this spread throughout the world is Delta. And we think that that's a combination of the waning, the waning vaccine effects just to infection, again, not to hospitalization and death. But also, we're, we're learning more and more about natural immunity, which I'll talk about more. And we really, natural immunity is very unreliable and doesn't last nearly as long. So we think we're coming to this perfect storm, where natural immunity, for people, for people who had it particularly, if they didn't have the Delta strain, that seems to be wearing off. That's, that's sort of a best guess.
How about the, now, they've got AstraZeneca, right, that vaccine? Are there differences in vaccines over in different countries?
It's hard for me to remember exactly which countries have which. But in general, AstraZeneca has been fairly comparable to our experience with Johnson &amp; Johnson. So it was slightly less effective upfront. And because it is so much less effective for preventing infections, in general, well, the FDA has recommended that everyone get a booster, who got Johnson &amp; Johnson at least two months ago. So AstraZeneca and J&amp;J are definitely considered somewhat less effective than the other vaccines.
Thank you. If you go to the next slide, this is talking about the boosters. And for the Pfizer and Moderna, at this point, it is calling out specific populations that are eligible for a booster. And as Dr. Sunnenschein just mentioned, Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's for anyone who received that vaccine, who is 18 and over, should and is recommended to get a booster. But at this point, for Pfizer and Moderna, there are some points that it wants you to be 65 or over, or 18 and over, if you live in a long-term care setting, or you have underlying medical conditions, or if you work or live in a high-risk setting. Do we believe that there may come a point that they recommend boosters for everyone? We think that that could be on the horizon, for sure. But at this point, these are the CDC recommendations, and this is what we're recommending everyone to follow.
Okay, well, I'm guessing that people in the medical profession, at least in, in certain jobs in the medical profession, are eligible for boosters.
Yes.
I know my son-in-law in Florida got a booster two months ago.
Yeah. Yeah, working in the medical profession is definitely going to be in one of those work-in-a-high-risk setting.
Thank you.
So if you go to the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about what the vaccines look like in Maricopa County. So you can go to, the first one is a graph. You see there, that's how many doses that we have administered in Maricopa County. You can see, when we were really at our peak in April, which was exciting for us, a lot of people were getting their vaccine, and it has steadily gone down. We saw a little slight increase in October. We think a lot of that was the push of hearing that Delta variant was here, that individuals were more likely to go get the vaccine. They were hearing that. And also, we're going to start to see a little bit of increase, we think, with the five to 11-year-olds being approved. But still, we'd like to see this trending much higher of individuals that are receiving vaccine in Maricopa County. If you go to the next slide, that's going to show where we're at with our percentages. We are at 54.2% of our residents have been vaccinated in Maricopa County. When you look at that number compared to the rest of the nation, it is on the lower end. Communities that have much higher percentages, close to 70, some even 80%, that's really what we're aiming for here in Maricopa County. So we have some work to do. If you go to the next slide, that's showing our vaccine stats.
Marcy, just a question on that.
Now, go ahead, Bill.
Do we know, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry about that. I've just got a little delay on this end. What, do we know how that compares with some of the other, you know, kind of benchmark counties that we tend to look at, top 10 counties in the country on that vaccination rate?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor Gates. When you look at some of those other large counties that are the same size comparable to Maricopa County, we still are on the lower end. I think we're almost at nearly the bottom, when you look at us compared to Chicago, LA, New York. We, we are definitely lower than those other counties.
Lower, I'm sorry, lower in terms of?
Lower in terms of the percentage of vaccin, fully vaccinated individuals.
And, Mr. Chairman, that, I mean, I don't want to get political, but that comes from leadership from the state. I mean, most of those large metropolitan cities have different policies statewide from, from some of those other states. So just to point that out.
You said you didn't want to get political.
What? Hey, I take my shots when I can.
Well, and, and one of the things I've, as you all know, I've tried to emphasize over and over again, a major frustration for me is that we make public health a political issue. It should not be.
Absolutely. And so here, when we look at the vaccine status by age group, what, what is really important here to notice is, when you look at our older individuals in Maricopa County, I really want to applaud them. They are up to 80, even 90% in some of those age groups, where we're really falling short, and we need to get a lot of work done. Again, I don't think it's fair to look at the five to 14 so much, because we just added that in, and they were just eligible for a vaccine. But really, when you look at that 15 to 44-year-old, those three groups, they're pretty low, especially in that 25 to 34 and that 15 to 24. We really need to get those populations to get vaccinated. And we think some of that has to do with, early on in this pandemic, there was a lot of, if you're younger, healthier, it's just like getting a cold. We now know, we've lost individuals in those age groups. Their, their families have been affected forever. These are individuals in those age groups that are in the hospitals on life support. So we know that the game has changed. The pandemic has changed, the variant has changed, and they're no longer have that sort of protection of their age and their youth that was on their side early in this pandemic. So it's a really important message for all of those age groups. If there's a vaccine available for you, you should be getting vaccinated.
Well, and certainly, some of those people in that age group that have gotten very, very sick have been otherwise very healthy people.
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Chairman, and sometimes we need to
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, sorry for interrupting. Just to clarify, then, from Marcy, so it's 58%? 58.2, that's our vaccination rate, or is it 54?
It's, we are at 54.2. Of the total population.
Okay, so what's that? Okay, so just help me understand, what's the 58.2 that I'm seeing on this chart?
That includes, if you'll see, that starts with the five to the 75 and older. It's not including that birth to five-year- It's not including that birth to five-year-old where there is no vaccine. So that population is of those who have a vaccine eligible.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, quite often, we look for historical perspective, and when I talk to some of the people in my district, you know, Sun City, Sun City West, and a lot of them go back to, trying to keep politics out of this, a lot of them go back to when polio shots, measles shots, were introduced, and they talk about with great pride, you know, how they wrangled up their whole family and went down to the school and got the whole family at once just because, you know, the government at that time said, hey, we finally have something to fight these things. And my dad talks about how everybody almost fought for those early spots to get their children with polio because of what they lived through. And we've lost that generation of people that watched measles and polio and take out, you know, significant portions of the population. So now, you know, all of us that didn't live through these types of diseases back in the day, just reflect on what's our government telling us, you know? So anyway, so I wish we could look back a little bit about what worked back then, and was it just, you know, the greatest generation understanding they fought for, you know, our freedoms, and they felt that this is what they were fighting for back then? So.
Absolutely. Supervisor Hickman, I want to add that we heard some of that, which was really exciting at our, a lot of the events we did on November the 6th for that five-to-11-year-old, we heard parents and grandparents telling their children, you're going to remember this day. You're going to remember this day that you got this shot, and it gave you the opportunity to go to a birthday party again, to be, go see grandma and grandpa again, that it's a historic day. And I couldn't agree with you more, that I think that we're fortunate in the generation that most of us are in, that we didn't have to live through the polio and measles because, you know, there was a vaccine available before we started school to be vaccinated for those things, and we didn't see the devastation of losing our friends, our family, our neighbors to those diseases. And unfortunately, I think COVID has taken some time for individuals to really believe that it's that same level of necessity, that we need this vaccine, and we need individuals to get vaccinated for.
And I believe vaccines that were required, and perhaps still are required.
Yeah, absolutely. So if you go to the next slide, I touched on this a little bit, but here's our events. The big rollout we had on November the 6th to memorialize and really promote the vaccine for five and older, we promoted 28 community events, and we have events scheduled just about daily with five-to-events, five-to-10 events happening every Saturday for the next couple of months. We've partnered with pharmacies and providers to vaccinate their patients, and this number does not include the 124 providers, pediatric providers mainly, that ordered vaccine. One provider vaccinated 4,100 kids with 4,000 more scheduled this week. So we really applaud those partners that have done that. And we estimate, although the numbers have not been finalized in ACES, which is the statewide database that reports vaccines, but we estimate that 10,000 vaccines have been administered since that date that the vaccine became available for that age group, so that's really great. If we go to the next slide, here's where I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sunnenshine to walk us through the natural immunity versus the vaccine immunity.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, COVID-19 vaccines have definitely been compared to natural immunity as much as we can. I think what's important to know is that it's really difficult to study natural immunity in the same way that we can study vaccines, because with vaccines, we know exactly when the vaccine was given, and we can sort of take blood routinely because we have clinical trial data. But what we've learned so far is that vaccines provide more effective and longer-lasting immunity than natural immunity from infection. And there's a lot of varying studies about how much and how often antibodies are produced when you get a natural infection. But one particular study that's, I think, fairly concerning is that up to 1/3 of people who are infected with COVID don't produce any antibodies at all. And that's typically in people who had mild illness or no symptoms at all. And the hard part about that is, one thing we definitely know is that how severe your symptoms are is very much related to how much antibodies, how many antibodies the person produces. But there's no, like, guideline where, you know, if I had sniffles and a headache for three days, then I have this many antibodies. So it's a continuum, but there's really no way to predict who is going to respond to their natural immunity and who isn't. So not everyone gets it. And then when we study it, we know that natural immunity fades faster than vaccine immunity, and that about 65% of people who have lower antibodies at the time of their infection completely lose their immunity by 60 days. Now, CDC uses the timeframe of, okay, if you know you got infected, then 90 days later, you can safely assume you probably won't get reinfected. But again, that varies from person to person, and you'll see some data that show that you may keep natural immunity up to a year, but it's very unreliable. So on a population basis, we cannot rely on natural immunity. And a couple of really good studies, one showed that natural immunity alone is less than half as effective as natural immunity plus getting, in this study, it was a single vaccine. So getting that vaccine on top of getting the disease offers you double the protection. And unvaccinated people are more than twice, even if they had prior infection, if they're unvaccinated, they're more than twice as likely to get reinfected with COVID than somebody who had a vaccine. So people who are relying on their natural immunity are definitely a lot of what's contributing to this increase in cases. And even just getting one dose, and I'm not recommending one dose, you should always get fully vaccinated, but even one dose on top of getting that infection will add so much more protection to the individual and to their families.
We're going to talk about looking ahead. The next slide is the concerns we have, and we've been mentioning them throughout the presentation, but we are seeing over 800 new cases a day. When we had, just a month ago, when we saw you all, we were around 1,500 cases a day averaging, so it's increasing. And our school outbreaks are also increasing again. We know that, just like the community events, the schools, this is the time of year for a lot of those fall homecomings, winter formals, all of those events are happening, and a lot of those events, the majority, have no mask requirements at them. The holiday season, we're just gearing up for it. We all know what is in just a few short weeks away, and it's a lot of holiday gatherings and events that typically folks are indoors. And we also know that the flu shot is available, we hope everyone goes and gets it, but our flu season has yet to begin. So we know that, combined with COVID, there's going to be a lot of circulating instances where individuals can get sick. And our hospitals are really struggling to find staff. The beds are still at 90% and higher of capacity filled, but the real issue they're struggling right now is finding staff, and that's very worrisome to our hospital partners. Dr. Sunnenshine meets with them and speaks with all of our CMOs on a regular basis, and they're very concerned moving into this holiday and flu season, seeing the numbers increase the way they are. They're very concerned and really asked us to make a plea with the public, to start wearing your mask again, whether you're vaccinated or not, especially when you're out in public and at these large events. I touched a little bit on the holiday season, but I wanted to go over for all of us that we're not asking anyone not to celebrate the holidays with your family, but we want you to do it as safely as possible. So the best way to keep your family safe and your friends is to get vaccinated if you're eligible. That's first and foremost. Protect those who are not eligible for a vaccine, such as young children, by getting yourself and others who are eligible vaccinated that are going to be around them. You should also wear a well-fitting mask over your nose and mouth if you're in public indoor setting, and this is if you are not fully vaccinated. But underneath, what's really important is even those who are fully vaccinated should wear a mask in public indoor settings and communities with substantial to high transmission. And we know here in Arizona, Maricopa County, we're in very high transmission, and as I mentioned earlier, the whole country is on high transmission right now. So really, what the takeaway is for that is, fully vaccinated or not, we're going to ask you, when you're in large public gatherings, and especially in indoor settings, please wear your mask. Avoid the crowded, poorly ventilated spaces, and if you are sick or have symptoms, please don't host or attend gatherings, and get tested. There's still a lot of testing available and at-home test kits now, so if you have symptoms, please get tested, or if you have a close contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19, please get tested. The next slide goes over what we would like as our goals for public health in our community, and the first is to decrease our community transmission to at least that moderate-to-low level. We don't foresee us getting to that low transmission level anytime real soon, but it would be really, really nice to get us into that moderate transmission level, and I think that's when we could go back to. If you're fully vaccinated, you can take your mask off and feel really safe, but we're just not there yet. And then the second is what I touched on earlier, which is having at least 70% of our population that is eligible to receive a vaccine to get that vaccine. And right now, we're at 54.2%. So it's super important, if you're eligible to get a vaccine, to get a vaccine. And that concludes our presentation.
I thought it was interesting to think back to the early days when our target was to get below 3% or 4% infection rate, and we're what, at what, 12% or 13% now?
Yeah, percent positivity.
Questions or comments for the public health? Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, thank you both. Great presentation, as always, always informative, and it's just a continued reminder on the work that still needs to be done. We're not out of the woods yet, and we got to continue to be careful. The first slide that really raised my attention was, let me go to slide four, looked at the increase on COVID cases. And if you look around the time period, you know, the October 10th and through the last portion of October, probably is not taking consideration of those that attended the State Fair, or went to Pride, or went to many of these sporting events that are happening now. So that really is an alarming slide there, that the number of cases continue to go up, and many of the events have still not happened. They're scheduled and coming up, as our weather is getting beautiful, it's great to be outdoors now. The question I have, go back to a comment, Marcy, that you, the booster, and I know what the recommendation is by the county and CDC, but made it a comment that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there might not be a need for everyone to get a booster. I know we're focused on, I'll be honest, full disclosure, I got my booster. I'm sorry, I just did. Full disclosure, I'm not ashamed of it, I felt it was the right thing to do, I called Fry's Pharmacy, do you have openings? They called me Thursday and said, come Friday morning, we'll fit you in, and they did. I'm not, I'm not, I don't care, I'm doing it. I don't care. But help me understand the booster, because I think, I mean, it's been almost nine months, eight months for, since I got my second dose. Why wouldn't we want, I understand the, our retirees, our older citizens, and those with compromised immune system, I get that, but why wouldn't we want to start looking at opening it up for everybody?
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo, and you should not be ashamed of getting a booster. In fact, the...
My arm still hurts.
Thank you for getting a booster. The recommendations are purposely designed by ACIP and CDC to be somewhat loose. It's that last category where it says, if you are in an occupation that puts you at high risk. In the past, they've tried to, you know, be very clear about which occupations they are. They intentionally did not try to do that. So if you're a bus driver, if you work in a bank and see customers all day long, if you work in the DMV, and you consider yourself to be at high risk, then you are at high risk, and you should get a booster. So if you interact with the public all the time, certainly law enforcement, all of those individuals are currently recommended to get a booster. And the way CDC puts it is, if you think you're at high risk, then you're at high risk, and you should get one. So anyone in the public can get a booster if they feel they're at high risk. Now, recently, Pfizer has just submitted their data to the FDA, making the case that they should just say flat out, everyone should get a booster. And FDA is reviewing those data as we speak. Given the increase in cases, we know that individuals who already got vaccinated are going to be much more likely to go and get a booster. Our number-one priority is always going to be to try to get unvaccinated people vaccinated because they are, and you can see by our numbers, when you looked at our cases, hospitalizations and deaths, far more people who are unvaccinated have those outcomes than who are vaccinated. But it will help, I think, if it is recommended that everyone get a booster. So what our policy is right now is, if you think you might need a booster, then you should go and get one, and I do think that we'll see a change in those recommendations soon.
And, Mr., thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's just a continued reminder that we continue to recommend people wearing masks. I mean, I'm out and about on a regular basis. I was out at an event last night, I'll be out on the ball field later on this evening, I'll be at another event on Tuesday, and back out on the ball field. I mean, I'm out and about, I'm going to restaurants, and I'm going to the stores regularly now. I don't see folks with masks, and that's the scary part. I don't, I can walk into a Target, and this was the Target that a few months ago, everyone was wearing masks, and I walk in there, and I'm probably one of 5% maybe inside the entire Target that's wearing masks. I walk into a restaurant, and, you know, I like to go out and dine out as well, like everyone else, and people aren't wearing masks, it's just not, and it's scary, it really is. And if they're not wearing a mask, just going to Fry's or Target, I know for a fact, they're not wearing a mask as they go to a concert down the street, or they had a big fight on Saturday, they're over here at the arena, you know, thousands of people, and I'm almost positive they weren't wearing masks, and that's the scary part. And so I think continuing the pressure, not so much pressure, but encouraging folks the importance of wearing masks, getting vaccinated. My school district, very proud of Phoenix Union, continues to partner up with the county to do the vaccinations now for our little ones. It was great to be out there and seeing the smiley faces, and these kids wanted to get vaccinated, they did. I mean, it wasn't, I remember when I was little, having to get, getting the, just the vaccinations, you know, when I was little, I hated it, and I dreaded it, but you see these kids and the smiley faces, and there was, I don't know if you saw my Twitter, but there was one picture of a young guy getting, a little, couldn't be more than five or six, getting his shot, and after he gets his shot, he gives me a thumbs up. That's the stuff. I mean, you see, they want to get vaccinated, you're right, they want to, they want to go back and see their grandparents, they want to go back to birthday parties and go into, doing fun stuff, castles and coasters type stuff, they want to do it, and I get it. But we got to continue to encourage our school district, we are, one of the things that we're doing is, we're doing a survey of many of the students that don't want to get vaccinated. I'm curious why, what is the reason? We're kind of trying to do a volunteer survey to get their read of why they don't want to get vaccinated, but we continue to push it, we have the incentive, continue, we're going to extend it for many of our students, our teachers, we're almost at 85% with just our employees. Our employees in Phoenix Union, almost 4,000 employees, almost at 85% vaccinated rate. So continue to push that. But I think, as a board, I think we have a responsibility and obligation to continue to encourage our... to encourage our own hard-working county employees to get vaccinated, get their family vaccinated, and continue to spread the word as we get into the winter months, because holidays are coming around, everyone's going to the malls, everyone's going to, you know, get in the holiday spirit, and I get it, but we got to continue to push that message, and I think that's the important thing. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hickman, question, comment?
I just know we have a big day, and we have a lot of topics in front of us, but I just wanted to thank you guys and the public health staff and for all your hard work all the way up to this point. We're not through with this, but thank you for coming and keeping us informed. Mr. Chairman, thank you for putting this on the agenda so we could get the latest numbers. And I appreciate you guys being bright-eyed and bushy-tailed again. It looks like maybe you've gotten a little bit of a rest as we continue to hit this straightforward. So it's nice, at this point in the pandemic, to see you guys wearing smiles, and I'm hoping that that translates to your entire staff and your crew that's working hard on this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Would echo the comments of my colleagues. Wanted to thank Supervisor Gallardo for the shout-out for castles and coasters, Point of Pride in District 3. So thank you for that. And Marcy and Dr. Sun and Shine, again, thank you to you guys and your team. As you have been from the beginning of this pandemic, you are voices of reason, and you are getting the information out that unfortunately maybe isn't getting out from others in the state of Arizona. And what I've heard here loud and clear is, again, we're having another spike, and that folks need to be careful out there. Again, a lot of the mandates are prohibited at this point, so we're not discussing that. To the extent that people can wear their masks out there, it's going to protect them to the extent that they can choose to get the vaccine, and if they have questions, they should definitely talk to their physicians, because we are far from being out of the woods. So, thank you again, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for putting these frequent updates on the agenda. I think it's so important, because again, this information is just not getting out there from other levels of government in Arizona right now, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And I just have to say once again, you know, I am so proud to have our Public Health Department representing us in this. I think that you are the reason, reasonable voice for the entire state. When we have questions, we get straightforward, honest answers from you, and so that's the reason I feel like it's important for us to continue to share that with the public every chance we get. So thank you for what you're doing, you're the best. Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Would you approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We will now move into executive session.